When we get started, we step the quorum and ask for the guests and visitors retire behind the rail. And we will have our invocation. That's a little quiet, please. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Michael Robinson, Senior Pastor of the Greater Enon Missionary Baptist Church. He is here today as my guest. I would ask all guests and members to please rise.
Thank you, Council President Clark. Good morning.
Good morning.
I greet you on behalf of Greater Enon Missionary Baptist Church, 22nd and Berks, in the heart of North Philadelphia where we serve and follow Christ. Let us pray. I pray today that council adopts the boldness of Shirley Chisholm to trailblaze good legislation that will benefit all the residents of Philadelphia. I pray for City Council to lead with the integrity of a Douglas Wilder, to reject injustices that attempt to undermine democracy of our citizenry. I pray for City Council to stand tall against political mudslinging and party partisanship. I pray for City Council to champion quality education with the zeal and advocacy of Frederick Douglass. I pray for City Council to rise above personal and political adversities like Nelson Mandela to serve the people with great dignity and compassion. I pray for City Council to adopt the innovative brilliance of Philip Eickmann-Walley to wisely troubleshoot and resolve difficult business matters that confront our city. I pray for City Council to reject the temptation to lie, cheat, steal, or malign others. I pray for the well-being of City Council's family and finances and faith formation. I pray for the physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual health of council and our great city. I pray for the uplift of Philadelphia and the safety of our citizens. God, thank you for life, strength, and health today. God, we thank you for the privilege you have given us all to serve in various forms of leadership. In Jesus' name we pray with thanksgiving, let all the people say amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor so much for those inspiring words. Council will be at ease. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 20th, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 20th, 2016 be approved.
It's been moved and probably second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 20th, 2016 stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil on behalf of the minority.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would dispense with the regular order of business and welcome and thank everyone for coming down, not only on this busy day but on this quite rainy day, to come down and witness your government in action. I want to say I really appreciate you taking time to come down to witness this. We hope your stay here today is not only knowledgeable one but a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented resolution recognizing the University of the Sciences Philadelphia College of Pharmacy Students Society of Health System Pharmacy. With Christopher Dorian and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining Councilwoman Blackwell, we have Councilwoman Gill, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Dom, and Councilman Jones.
Good morning, everyone. This is a pleasure for me, and as you know, just representing a few universities, it gives me a great pleasure to stand here and for us to make this presentation, and for a gentleman who was here, who was once part of our body, where is he? That's right, so now we're glad that, so David decided he didn't want to leave me, so, nah, but we're honored. Resolution recognizing the University of the Sciences Philadelphia College of Pharmacy Students Society of Health System Pharmacy on the occasion of the American Pharmacists' Month. Whereas the American Pharmacists' Month is celebrated annually during October and...
Whereas American Pharmacists' Month promotes pharmacists as medication experts, an integral member of the healthcare team, and directly involved in patient care, and...
Whereas American Pharmacists' Month aims to educate the public policymakers and other healthcare professionals about the role a pharmacist plays in the reduction of overall healthcare costs and safe, effective management of medication, and...
Whereas pharmacists have a significant role in assessing patients' medication management and referring them to physicians, and whereas the University of the Sciences Philadelphia College of Pharmacy is the first pharmacy college established in North America, and...
Whereas the Philadelphia College of Pharmacy Students Society of Health System Pharmacy, PCP/SSHP, is a student-run organization at the University of the Sciences that was created to make students aware of pharmacy practice in hospitals and health systems, encourage student interests and engagement in hospital and health system pharmacy practice, and to aid the community with student-provided services, and...
Whereas in an effort to uphold its mission to aid the community with student-provided services, PCP/SSHP, in partnership with other pharmacy-focused student organizations, including the American Pharmacists' Association Academy of Student Pharmacists from the University of the Sciences, are providing a health fair on October 27th, 2016, in the City Hall Courtyard, open to all who would like to gain a greater understanding of their health and health choices. Now therefore be it...
Resolved by the City Council of Philadelphia that we hereby recognize and commend the University of the Sciences Philadelphia College of Pharmacy Students on the occasion of American Pharmacists' Month. Further resolved that a gross copy of this resolution be presented to representatives of the University of the Sciences as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body.
Chair recognizes Mr. Dorian for remarks.
Hello, everyone. It's great to be here this morning. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Blackwell so much for allowing us to be here this morning. My name's Chris, and I'm here on behalf of the Philadelphia College of Pharmacy Students Society of Health System Pharmacy, which is a chapter of the American Society of Health System Pharmacists. And we're advocating for provider status always. It's a big issue, so if you're interested in legislative action, we'd love to go on our website and check that out. But the message we want to get across here with my colleague Kevin from the American Pharmacists' Association Academy of Student Pharmacists, what we really want to push across here is that pharmacists are here to provide care. In school, the main thing we learn about is the provision of care and making you healthier and making Philadelphia healthier. We have a wonderful, very large number of health science universities in Philadelphia, like the University of the Sciences, and ultimately, our goal as students and our goal in our practices is to make the world healthier. We really want to be a resource for you, and we want you to see us as students as a resource for you, and we want you to see your pharmacist as a resource for you. Pharmacists provide care. And with October Pharmacists' Month in the American Pharmacists' Association, what we're promoting here is know your medicine, know your pharmacist. So, if you have a good relationship with your pharmacist, they can really make you healthier, and that's what we're here for today, and we're going to be having a health fair, my colleague's going to talk about.
So, I just want to say thank you for having us here today. As stated before, pharmacy is the birthplace, birthplace is in Philadelphia. Not just Philadelphia is our birthplace of our nation. And back in 1821, pharmacy was a very different thing. We have a difference in amount of education, our abilities, and our roles that we play as professionals in the health system. Unfortunately, because of legislation, that's what's holding us back from providing care to the society. So, we really do appreciate the voice that you're giving to our profession, and so we can help with progressing pharmacy. Unfortunately, we weren't able to provide this thanks back to you today. Because of weather conditions, we aren't able to have the health screening event today, but we wish to provide our thanks in another way, in another ways with our opportunities to work with you later on. Thank you.
Before we close, I would just like to make two special recognitions for two people who made this possible for me and Kevin and all the other students. I want to recognize Mr. David Ford, who is here from the University of the Sciences, Office of the President. And we also, we also want to recognize Estelle Sheridan from the Philadelphia College of Pharmacy, Office of the Dean. She's not here today, but I want to recognize those people who are helping us make this possible, and Councilwoman Blackwell for this entire thing. Thank you so much.
Council ladies. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home War Charter, and today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 160774, 160775, 160776, 160808, 160839, 160865, and 160869. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the 5th Council Manic District in accordance with terms of Chapter 16, 700 of the Philadelphia Code, and a resolution approving the appointment of Patrick Eating as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 325 by relocating portions of certain house lines and curb lines in the vicinity of the intersection of Roosevelt Boulevard, Sully Avenue, Holm Avenue, and Pocessin Avenue in order to conform with the lines and conditions established by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 19S by striking from the city plan and vacating Mifflin Street from Swanson Street to Van Dalia Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one resolution.
Thank you.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the 5th Council Manic District in accordance with terms of Chapter 16, 700 of the Philadelphia Code.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I am co-introducing a non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Patrick Eating as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two resolutions cosponsored by, one by Cindy Bass, and the other by Councilwoman Janie Blackwell and Bill Greenlee.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety and Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold joint public hearings concerning the recent death of a juvenile at the Wordsworth Academy, and future plans for safety at juvenile treatment facilities caring for Philadelphia youth.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the National Association of Black Storytellers and Keepers of the Culture for hosting the 34th Annual Black Storytelling Festival and Conference in Philadelphia.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
Signed by all members of council.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution authorizing Council's committees on legislative oversight and commerce and economic development to hold hearings examining economic inclusion and diversity, participation in professional services, capital projects, and other contracted work related to the planned $600 million investment in Philadelphia's rebuild initiative.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kian Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills for me and one on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 2nd Street, Burke Street, 3rd Street, Indiana Avenue, 2nd Street, Huntington Street, Howard Street, and Dolphin Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 9, 205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on both sides of the 200 through 400 block of West Allegheny Avenue between North 2nd Street and North 5th Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 9, 605 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Towing by amending the definition of consensual towing, amending towing agreements in certain circumstances, and amending towing charges.
Refer to committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions. Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings examining economic inclusion and diversity, participation in professional services, capital projects, and other contracted work related to the planned $600 million investment in Philadelphia's rebuild initiative.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kian Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills for me and one on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 2nd Street, Burke Street, 3rd Street, Indiana Avenue, 2nd Street, Huntington Street, Howard Street, and Dolphin Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 9, 205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on both sides of the 200 through 400 block of West Allegheny Avenue between North 2nd Street and North 5th Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 9, 605 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Towing by amending the definition of consensual towing, amending towing agreements in certain circumstances, and amending towing charges.
Refer to committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings examining economic inclusion and diversity, participation in professional services, capital projects, and other contracted work related to the planned $600 million investment in Philadelphia's rebuild initiative.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kian Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills for me and one on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 2nd Street, Burke Street, 3rd Street, Indiana Avenue, 2nd Street, Huntington Street, Howard Street, and Dolphin Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 9, 205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on both sides of the 200 through 400 block of West Allegheny Avenue between North 2nd Street and North 5th Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 9, 605 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Towing by amending the definition of consensual towing, amending towing agreements in certain circumstances, and amending towing charges.
Refer to committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding the Philadelphia Capital Consortium.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the Community Design Collaborative on the 25th anniversary of its founding.
Also on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Good morning, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Tobenberger.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thompson.
Good morning, Council President. And colleagues, I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill today.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan
Number 19S by striking from the city plan and vacating Mifflin Street from Swanson Street to Van Dalia Street, and reserving and placing on the city plan a right-of-way for various utility purposes.
Refer to committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill today.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Marshall Street, Rockland Street, 6th Street, Roosevelt Boulevard, Wingerhocken Street, 11th Street, and Loudoun Street.
And that's refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer two privileged resolutions cosponsored by Kian Sanchez, Green, Squilla, Dom, and Bass. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Esperanza on the occasion of its 30th anniversary.
Today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing November 2016 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in Philadelphia in honor of pancreatic cancer patients, caregivers, survivors, and those who have succumbed to the disease.
And also on today's final passes calendar, that concludes introductions of bills and resolutions. We will now move to our reports on committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the Committee of Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development have one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, to which is referred bill number 160709, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 17, 100 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled Procurement Contracts by Further Providing with Respect to Local Bidding, the Local Bidding Preference, Including but Not Limited to Provisions Concerning Penalties, Requirements Necessary for Certification and Recertification, and Further Providing for the Relationship Between Prime Contractors and Subcontractors," all under certain terms and conditions. Respectful reports. It has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 160709.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended this day, so as to permit first reading this day on bill number 160709. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our committee reports, and we will now have consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from the committee with suspension of the rules has been deemed to have had a first reading. This bill will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council, as there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar today. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purposes of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today.
Well, thank you, Council President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passes calendars today. Bill numbers 160922, 160923, 160924, 160925, 160928, 160929, 160930, 160931, 160934, 160935, 160940, 160519, 160612, 160686, 160617, 160774, 160775, and 160843. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before considering these bills and resolutions on our final passes calendars today, we will have our public comment session, and will go as follows. If you are interested in testing or in testifying on a bill or resolution on a final passes calendar today, if you have not already done so, I'd ask that you please sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium, and there's a device on that podium. When the light on that device turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
John Cooper. Commenting on a resolution introduced by Councilman O today.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for having me. Basically, I'm here to testify in the IMD exclusion, basically to keep it short and sweet. Council, anyone in the city is aware of the heroin and opioid epidemic that we have going on. The IMD exclusion is the government, is being implemented by the government CMS Community for Medicaid Services to cut the federal Medicaid match to the state for drug and alcohol and mental health. In the midst of everyone being aware of the crisis that we're in, to cut treatment in any facility with more than 16 beds, I plead with you. It passed in the House yesterday, 194 to 0, to urge the President to please intervene and stop this. Basically, all I have to say about it.
Thank you so much for your testimony, sir.
Robert Taylor. Commenting on 160930.
Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Robert Taylor, president of Transport Workers Local 700, and WPEB 88.1 co-host on the Jasper Jones Show. I'm commenting on resolution 160930, calling on SEPTA and Transport Workers Union 234 to reach a long-term agreement. Naturally, I support this resolution, and I want to thank council members Johnson, Parker, Dom, Squilla, Sanchez, Blackwell, and Heenan for their sponsorship. Indeed, while we pray that a strike can be averted, nevertheless, any agreement must protect the rights and livelihood of the SEPTA workforce. I also support Mr. Donahell, who should be up here shortly, in his quest for the protection of property rights, individual rights reform outlined in the Great Declaration. As Frederick Douglass said, "The principles contained in the Declaration of Independence are saving principles. Stand by those principles, be true to them on all occasions, in all places, and against all foods, whatever the cost." Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony, sir.
Pam Africa. Commenting on 160923.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Janie Blackwell and Cindy Bass for introducing this resolution, and I'd like to thank the power of the word, W-U-
Thank you, Councilman. She recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. She recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill today.
And ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan number nineteen S by striking from the city plan and vacating Mifflin Street from Swanson Street to Vandalia Street and reserving and placing on the city plan a right of way for various utility purposes.
Refer to committee. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill today.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Marshall Street, Rockland Street, Sixth Street, Roosevelt Boulevard, Wingerhocking Street, Eleventh Street, and Loudoun Street.
And that's referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer two privilege resolutions cosponsored by Kenyon Sanchez, Green, Squilla, Dom, and Bass. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring and congratulating Esperanza on the occasion of its thirtieth anniversary.
Today's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing November two thousand sixteen as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in Philadelphia in honor of pancreatic cancer patients, caregivers, survivors, and those who have succumbed to the disease.
And also on today's final passes calendar, that concludes our introductions of bills and resolutions. We will now move to our reports on committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the Committee of Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development have one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to which is referred bill number one six oh seven oh nine entitled, an ordinance amending chapters seventeen, one hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled procurement contracts by further providing with respect to local bidding preference, including but not limited to provisions concerning penalties, requirements necessary for certification and recertification, and further providing for the relationship between prime contractors and subcontractors, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectful reports. It has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended. So as to permit first reading this day of bill number one six zero seven oh nine.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended this day so as to permit first reading this day on bill number one six oh seven oh nine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our committee reports, and we will now have consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from the committee with suspension of the rules has been deemed to have had a first reading. This bill will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar today, chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purposes of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today.
Well, thank you, Council President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill numbers one six zero nine two two, one six zero nine two three, one six zero nine two four, one six zero nine two five, one six zero nine two eight, one six zero nine two nine, one six zero nine three zero, one six zero nine three one, one six zero nine three four, one six zero nine three five, one six zero nine four zero, one six zero five one nine, one six zero six one two, one six zero six eight six, one six zero six one seven, one six zero seven seven four, one six zero seven seven five, and one six zero eight four three. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before considering these bills and resolutions on our final passes calendars today, we'll have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testing on a, testifying on a bill or resolution on a final passes calendar today, if you have not already done so, I'd ask that you please sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium, and there's a device on that podium. When the light on that device turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
John Cooper. Commenting on a resolution introduced by Councilman O today.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for having me. Basically, I'm here to testify in the I M D exclusion. Basically, to keep it short and sweet. Council, anyone in the city is aware of the heroin and opioid epidemic that we have going on. The I M D exclusion is the government, is being implemented by the government, C M S, Community for Medicaid Services, to cut the federal Medicaid match to the state for drug and alcohol and mental health. In the midst of everyone being aware of the crisis that we're in, to cut treatment in any facility with more than sixteen beds, I plead with you. It passed in the House yesterday, one hundred ninety-four to zero, to urge the President to please intervene and stop this. Basically, all I have to say about it.
Thank you so much for your testimony, sir.
Robert Taylor. Commenting on one six oh nine three oh.
Good morning.
Morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Robert Taylor, president of Transport Workers Local seven hundred, and W P E B eighty-eight point one co-host on the Jasper Jones Show. I'm commenting on resolution one six zero nine three zero, calling on SEPTA and Transport Workers Union two thirty-four to reach a long-term agreement. Naturally, I support this resolution, and I want to thank councilmembers Johnson, Parker, Dom, Squilla, Sanchez, Blackwell, and Heenan for their sponsorship. Indeed, while we pray that a strike can be averted, nevertheless, any agreement must protect the rights and livelihood of the SEPTA workforce. I also support Mr. Donahell, who should be up here shortly, in his quest for the protection of property rights, individual rights reform outlined in the Great Declaration. As Frederick Douglass said, "The principles contained in the Declaration of Independence are saving principles. Stand by those principles, betroth them to them on all occasions, in all places, and against all foods, whatever the cost." Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony, sir.
Pam Africa. Commenting on one six oh nine two three.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Janie Blackwell and Cindy Bass for introducing this resolution, and I'd like to thank the power of the word, W U R D nine hundred, for helping to expose the injustices that's happening in the prison. And for over a year and a half, I've been investigating the water in the prisons, and, you know, I've been giving the runaround for a while. The water inside the prisons, and I'm speaking especially right now on Greater Spur, which I had a copy of a newspaper article that talks about the dangers of the water that is causing cancer, destroying inmates' reproductive organs, and a whole list of things that's happening. And in Greater Spur Prison, in order for inmates to drink clean water, they gotta buy it. And Mahanoi Prison come to find out that each prisoner is given three cups of water three times a day. The water is black, and it's oily, and it's causing dangerous skin diseases, and people are also dying from the water. And Frackville Prison, the water, each inmate is given one gallon of water a day. And this is a war crime. Water is the necessity of life. On twenty twenty, a few months ago, an inmate, and as it was coming in, and Mr. Wetzel was bringing him through, an inmate ran in front of the camera, and he said, an elder, he said, "You gotta help us. The water smells like goose poop and chlorine bleach." He said, "We're dying in here. We're dying from the water." And inmates in there who have got to wash and clean themselves, who have sores and things on them, and are suffering from this. They can't clean themselves, so they're getting heavily infected. Also, it speaks about the diseases in the prison. And I want to especially talk about hepatitis C. Hepatitis C is a disease that affects the liver, and in order for you, the protocol for the prison is one that states that in order for you to get the hepatitis C cure, you would have to be bleeding from the vessels in your chest, you would have to be bleeding from your esophagus, or the majority of your liver would have to be calcified with cirrhosis of the liver. This is a horrible, torturous disease that is happening, and from the statistics, because I do investigative work, it's up to seven thousand inmates who have active hepatitis C. In order for you to get the cure, you would have to be on a list, and the following description that I gave is where you would have to be. I'm concerned because I have a brother named Mumia Abu-Jamal in Mahanoi. I have a brother by the name of Eddie Africa. And in the other prisons, I have other inmates who have this, you know, that is suffering under this. Ten seconds. Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, because she's petitioning Governor Wolf to do something about that. Thank you for the power of the word, W U R D nine hundred, and long live John Africa for giving us the strength to stand before you and deliver this information.
Thank you so much for your testimony, ma'am.
Joe Denahell. Commenting on one six oh nine two five, one six oh nine three one, one six oh nine two nine, one six oh nine three five, and one six oh six one seven.
Okay. Last week, council honored jurors in jury trials. Yet members of this council, the city of Philadelphia, the mayor's office, and other elected to office have opposed my right to trial, jury trial, for the taking without due process or just compensation of my home, ten thirty-eight West Wyoming Avenue. Your actions speak louder than your words. Twenty-two years I have suffered at the hands of government. Last week, as in other weeks, during my official decree, members of this government got up and left the room. This is egregious behavior. In my opinion, they were acting like three-year-olds that don't want to listen to alleged crimes committed. The inaction. Inaction is, in and of itself, a crime. Can a firefighter refuse to fight a fire? Elected leaders are oath and law-bound to act. Again, I make an official decree to defund and stop using Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, District Attorney's Office, City Comptroller's Office, and the Sheriff's Department for the illegal transfer of deed and lack of due process in the matter of ten thirty-eight West Wyoming Avenue. No just compensation was paid, no jury trial was held, and no legal form authorization to transfer was given by me. I further demand council ask the governor, the U.S. Attorney General, and the P A Attorney General's Office to conduct three separate investigations so that criminal charges may be filed for violations of forty-two U.S.C. nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-five, and nineteen eighty-six, eighteen U.S.C. twenty-three eighty-one, twenty-three eighty-four, the U.S. and P.A. constitutions among those, among others, unnamed. I just want to leave you with these parting words. It takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow this level of corruption to exist.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Michael Robertson. Commenting on one six oh nine three oh.
Hello, everybody.
Good morning.
I, I am sure that everybody in this room would like to see a peaceful resolution to this SEPTA strike, and that everybody gets what they want. But on November the eighth, something very important is happening in this country. As we all know, Pennsylvania is a swing state. We all know that Philadelphia is a very important component, and will have a lot of effect on this election. This SEPTA strike at this time is really a problem. I'm talking about one week. You can wait one week for the most important election in the history of this country. I actually witnessed, maybe a week or so ago, I witnessed councilperson Clark, I mean, not council, a president speak on the integrity of, the integrity that we have here in this city as far as elections, and absurdity of that being questioned. But I may be preaching to the choir, but if anyone in city council can sit these folks down and say, "Can you please wait for one week?" Because this is too critical. I'm sure you can last for a week, but this is too important. This can affect people who may be, you know, live in West Philly and moved to nice town, and are still, and haven't changed their registration. This can have an impact, and we need every vote, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment session, and we will now move to our calendar. And Mr. Decker, please read the title of one six oh nine two two.
A resolution urging the United States Congressional Appropriations Committee to increase funding for LIHEP in F Y two thousand seventeen.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one six oh nine two two is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh nine twenty-three.
A resolution calling upon Governor Wolf and the Pennsylvania State Legislature to ensure that individuals incarcerated and working in state prisons have access to clean water and proper health services.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one six oh nine twenty-three is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh nine twenty-four.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the fifth council manic district that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. One six oh nine two four is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh nine twenty-five.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the fifth council manic district in accordance with terms of chapter sixteen seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. One six oh nine two five is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh nine twenty-eight.
A resolution also naming the fifty-six hundred block of West Droid Avenue as James Allen Way in honor of Reverend James S. Allen Senior to commemorate his thirty-seven years of preaching at Vine Memorial Baptist Church.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one six oh nine twenty-eight is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh nine twenty-nine.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the second council manic district that will be transferred by the city to the authority.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one six oh nine twenty-nine is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh nine three oh.
A resolution calling on the southeast, southeast Pennsylvania Transit Authority, SEPTA, and Transit Workers Union Local two thirty-four to reach a long-term labor agreement in order to avert a strike and ensure continuity of transit service for the well-being of the citizens of Philadelphia.
And the chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one six oh nine three oh is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh nine thirty-one.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the seventh council manic district that will be transferred by the city to the authority.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kenyon Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one six oh nine thirty-one is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh nine, I'm sorry, nine three four.
A resolution urging the Congress of the United States to utilize its full authority to repair our broken and unsustainable prescription drug pricing system.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one six oh nine thirty-four is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh nine three five.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the green, which redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as twenty-one fourteen South Seventh Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh nine four oh.
A resolution urging the President of the United States and the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services to halt implementation of the new fifteen-day limit on Medicaid coverage for addiction treatment in residential addiction treatment programs with more than sixteen beds.
And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. One six oh nine four oh is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of one six oh five one nine.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to grant to the owner of eleven forty R South Fifteenth Street an easement across a portion of a certain parcel of land known as eleven twenty-nine South Sidenhamp Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I want to withdraw that bill.
There's a motion to withdraw one six oh five one nine and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. One six oh five one nine has been withdrawn. Mr. Decker, please read the title, one six oh six one two.
An ordinance establishing a neighborhood improvement district consisting of a parcel located at the northeast corner of Fifteenth Street and Chestnut Street, commonly known as fourteen forty-one Chestnut Street, to be known as the Headquarter Hotel Neighborhood Improvement District, designating Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development to serve as Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for the district, including a list of proposed improvements and their estimated cost, and providing for special financing assessments to be levied on property owners within the district.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kenyon Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title, one six oh six eight six.
An ordinance establishing a neighborhood improvement district to be known as the South Ninth Street Area Business District in an area that generally includes properties located on portions of South Eighth Street, South Ninth Street, South Tenth Street, Christian Street, Monroe Street, Carpenter Street, Washington Avenue, Ellsworth Street, East Passyunk Avenue, and certain other streets within the area depicted on the preliminary plan, and including curb market stands located along certain of those streets, designating South Ninth Street Area Business District a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for the district, including a list of proposed amendments and their estimated cost, and providing for assessment fees to be levered on property owners within the district.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill number one six zero six eight six be withdrawn.
It's been moved and properly seconded. That bill number one six oh six eight six be withdrawn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. One six oh six eight six is withdrawn from the calendar. Mr. Decker, one six oh six one seven.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce to acquire approximately twenty-point-eight acres of land known as Parcel G, bounded by Island and Bartram Avenues and I ninety-five.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kenyon Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, one six oh seven seven four.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to accept an assignment of an easement agreement pertaining to property along the Delaware River bounded by North Delaware Avenue, Penn Treaty Park, the Delaware River, and Shackham Axon Street extended to the Delaware River, commonly known as eleven forty-three through fifty-one Delaware Avenue.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kenyon Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, one six oh seven seven five.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire feasible title or a lesser interest, such as an easement, by purchase, condemnation, or otherwise in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Delaware River Trail connecting to Penn Treaty Park, and authorizing an agreement between the city and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the P R A to act as the city's condemnation agent.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kenyon Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, one six oh eight forty-three.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development for use by the city of premises located at four fifty-six North Fifth Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kenyon Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety and Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold joint public hearings concerning the recent death of juvenile at Wordsworth Academy and future plans. death of juvenile at Wordsworth Academy and future plans for safety at juvenile treatment facilities caring for Philadelphia youth, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
Been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the National Association of Black Storytellers and Keepers of the Culture, Inc., for hosting the 34th Annual Black Storytelling Festival and Conference in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Again, thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing councils committees on legislative oversight and commerce and economic development to hold hearings examining economic inclusion and diversity participation in professional services, capital projects, and other contracted work related to the planned $600 million investment in Philadelphia's rebuild initiative, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding the Philadelphia Capital Consortium, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the Community Design Collaborative on the 25th anniversary of its founding, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Esperanza on the occasion of its 30th anniversary, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing November 2016 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in Philadelphia in honor of pancreatic cancer patients, caregivers, survivors, and those who have succumbed to the disease, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I'd like to just, uh, thank the State Senate for, uh, their, um, while they did pass House Bill 1885, most importantly, they took out the language which would withhold funding, state funding to, uh, the city and county of Philadelphia. That would have been devastating for us, the mere passing of that law, which would withhold $2.7 billion, would be catastrophic to our operation of this city. Uh, while it did pass, uh, the penalties are significant but far less damaging than the withholding of state funds. The result is the Philadelphia will be ineligible for law enforcement grants. I, I understand that might be around $20 million that will no longer be able to support safe streets, uh, safe communities, uh, better policing as a result of the passage of that bill, if in fact the governor signs it. The other thing is, takes away the immunity of the city, uh, for lawsuits resulting from the executive order. Uh, we now go to the governor, and, uh, it is democracy in action, uh, and I do appreciate, uh, your role, uh, the mayor's role, and, uh, our, our delegation in ensuring that our city can continue to operate and serve the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and I must say that during my trip to Harrisburg on Monday, your name came up, uh, citing your concerns about the bill. Thank you for your vigilance on a very important issue. Speech on the part of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out something that happened last night up in Harrisburg, speaking of Harrisburg, and, uh, we as a council have been working on the issue surrounding the overexposure of alcohol in many of our communities for many years. Councilwoman Blackwell really coined the phrase "stop and go," and her efforts along with yours, Council President, and really all of my colleagues are continually thwarted by some of the things that do happen in Harrisburg around this particular issue. Um, you know, this, this issue is very damaging to the Commonwealth's largest city, Philadelphia. Uh, we need help, and we need a partnership on this particular issue. We've been asking on liquor licenses, we've been asking on gun laws, and there is a connection between what happens in our neighborhoods and how these things are happening, and the fact that they've been legalized often without any sort of public input, any sort of public comment, um, uh, and they just are happening in our neighborhoods without folks knowing. The latest thing that happened, um, overnight in Harrisburg, uh, was that there was a vote taken in the State Senate, uh, to amend some alcohol, uh, liquor laws, uh, which would most notably allow beer distributors to now sell smaller quantities of beer, uh, from a six-pack to a single can. So now, they would be able, if, if Governor Wolf signs this piece of legislation, they would be able to compete with stop and goes that sell single cans of, of beer and malt liquor. And so, the question is, how many of these establishments do we need, uh, in our community? As I had mentioned before, I have, uh, 26 of these types of establishments, stop and goes in my community, in my district, and this would clearly increase the number of outlets where you would be able to purchase single, uh, single cans of beer, alcohol. Um, and with this increased continuous exposure and consumption of alcohol among a very vulnerable population, I think that it's time for all of us to call on Governor Wolf to say, "We need help." We need for him to, uh, really look at this piece of legislation and to not sign it, and so I would urge that folks would reach out and say, "We, we just really cannot absorb any more of this in Philadelphia." Um, you know, we have to understand that Philadelphia is not the same as Cambria County or Potter County, or, you know, uh, they really have to understand that what we need is so much very, so very different from what other folks need. And again, these stop and goes, they, you know, 90% of those in my district, uh, sell no food, they don't have restrooms available for their, uh, customers, they don't, uh, have the tables and chairs. All of these are requirements to have their restaurant license, and they don't have any of it. So, we need some help on this issue, and I just really want to urge folks to pay attention and to reach out to the governor's office, uh, as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for your diligence on that. Um, and I do want to say, Councilwoman, there was some discussion, my members of the Philly delegation, about, uh, addressing some of those issues, so we'll do a follow-up and have a sit-down with them over the next.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I did, um, uh, speak with Senator Hughes this morning, um, about this particular issue, and so I did want to also acknowledge and thank Senator Hughes, Williams, and Kitchen for standing up and, and speaking out against this and saying what a detrimental effect it would have here on the city of Philadelphia. So, they really, uh, clearly get it, and, uh, want to acknowledge them as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will be on it. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. Um, so, last night, I, I wanted to bring up two, uh, things very briefly, but last night, we had, uh, an education town hall, thanks to the hosting of Councilman O'Neil and to my colleagues Alan Dom and Councilman Taubinberger for coming out, uh, to, to share on it. And we'll be having another one in November with, uh, Councilwoman Blackwell at Paul Ribison High School. But a number of the things that have come out a little bit have been the fact that, uh, the school year has, um, opened up with, um, you know, a lot of hopes and promises about where we're going to be on terms of staffing. But we have about 108 teacher vacancies still impacting over 3,000 students across the school district. The teacher vacancies, again, impact the fact that we've outsourced our substitutes out to Kelly Services. Um, we are still waiting to see what the fill rates are, but I don't think anyone in this chamber wants to see a rehashing of what happened last year with the Source for Teachers contract and how thousands of students went to summer school and were, were, are receiving, uh, compensatory education because they didn't have a teacher in the classroom for the majority of the year. But we still have severe situations of overcrowding and split grades. Um, I would ask that if any of my council colleagues might reach out to their network schools to find out and get, um, kind of an assessment of what's happening within those schools with a particular attention to schools that are missing essential core subjects. So, Lincoln High School, for example, is missing an English teacher and a biology teacher. And those are tested subjects, those are mandatory subjects. It's October 18th, I mean, I'm sorry, it's October, um, it's the, it's the end of October, um, and students need to be in classrooms with a full-time teacher, getting their education. School started on September 18th. It's not starting November 1st or, or any later. So, um, I would just urge my colleagues to continue to reach out, and we're working with the school district to figure out, um, how we're doing it. But at the end of the day, we're over three and a half years without a teacher's contract. Um, we've got teachers who have eight years with a master's degree earning what they would receive at four years with a bachelor's. And this situation is pretty untenable. It's been that way for a while, but we need, um, particular attention to the teacher's contract. But in the meantime, if we could just take a look at what's happening in our network schools, um, and just count overcrowding, vacancies, split grades, and missing teachers in core subject areas. Um, and then briefly, I just wanted to say, uh, a thank you to my fellow councilwoman, Maria Kiernan Sanchez, um, who helped lead an important conversation about the Berks County Detention Center. Um, we may have some communication with some of the Berks County Commissioners who are unhappy about the fact that Philadelphia's being very vocal about a, a family detention center an hour away from us, which is housing almost exclusively refugee women and children, um, in the facilities, who've been there beyond ICE's required 20 days. Some of them have been in there for more than a year. No charges, no, uh, determination of when this detention ends, no solution, and no resolution, in fact. Um, the detention center has been recommended for closure by the State Department of Edu- uh, by the Pennsylvania Department of State. Um, Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency has already made a statement and recognized, um, that there are troubling issues when we detain children for more than a year, and in particular, uh, human rights groups have started to come and denounced family detention as being abusive and inhumane. Um, and so, I want to thank my colleagues. If you have any questions or need to reach out, um, we've been invited to go visit the Berks County Detention Center, um, and so, uh, would be glad to work with Councilwoman Kiernan Sanchez, myself, and others, um, who are, who are interested in this issue. But, but our belief is that this is not a law and order issue, this is an issue of international human rights. It's worthy of international investigation, and it's going to take, um, a firm calling to, to draw attention and, and family detention in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and the country overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank all the city council members that joined, um, on a Friday last week to, uh, send an opposition to House Bill 1280, uh, that was going to preempt, uh, all municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, um, for, uh, any type of plastic bag fee or ban or use. And, uh, the important was not whether you were in favor of the ban or a fee on plastic bags, but just at the preemption of the Commonwealth, of all municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. And, um, I'd like to thank Council President, who was up there last Friday, too, during this vote, and also to our, um, our House delegation, uh, the, the Philadelphia delegation that really came on strong and, um, helped support this, or oppose this up in Harrisburg, and got a lot of other members throughout the Commonwealth to oppose this bill. Uh, and I think it was a good choice. Initially, it didn't look good, but it got turned around at the very last minute. So, Council President, thank you for being up in Harrisburg, and thank you to our Philly delegation, the State Representative Donatucci and the leadership up there, and we really appreciated all the help we received, uh, in Harrisburg on this. So, it does show that we can work together with our state, uh, representatives, and looking forward to continue that great relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for organizing the council effort as it relates to the communication. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to share some positive news, and that is, a recent chart came out on the 21 largest cities in the country, and seven cities of the 21 have recovered from the 2008 peak in the real estate market. 14 of them are still below the 2008 peak, 14. Of the seven cities, for example, San Francisco, Austin, Denver, and Philadelphia is one of those seven, which is amazing, which really sends a better message to us, and that is, we really need to focus on collecting delinquent taxes and correctly assessing our properties. But we're one of the seven, which is phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, that concludes our speeches. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, just want to remind everyone that there is a briefing, uh, an update on, by the Energy Authority. Um, recall, a few months back, somebody promised 10,000 jobs that were going to be created. I don't know who that was. Um, but, uh, there is going to be a very exciting briefing, um, about the Energy Authority and the work that's going to be taking place, and it lays out a timeline, so it's going to be very important to me, the members or, and/or their staff should, uh, come to the briefing in the caucus room at 1:30 to get an update on where everybody is. Uh, with that, uh, I would like to call on Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 3rd, 2016, at 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved in property. Second, that the council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 3rd, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.